I want to order the meeting for our town board commissioners. In my case, it turns out that as we are meeting with customers, we'll begin the meeting as long as it's silent, and if we might just think about the victims of the hurricanes.
To the flag of the United States of America and to all who witness this dance on the nation of our God and the people who do the injustice crawl.
I have your agenda before me. I believe there are a few changes to the agenda. The honor is to give a resolution in remembrance of the fact that today is the 16th anniversary of the 9/11 tragedy. The board has a copy of that and at appropriate time after our agenda is set, we'll take a look at that resolution. Are there changes to any of the agendas of either the consent agenda or the regular agenda? Hearing the understand except for the addition of the, yes, Brian Bruce Beck.
I'm sorry. I believe Victoria put two different memorandums in front of you this evening to set public hearings, and staff is willing to go over those to like, ideally both can be handled in the Senate. We're not further discussing any of the new business.
What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to hear these, add these in or consent?
I'd like to have them to do with this. Here about, here about.
To accept public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So now this one is set public hearing, another is determined sufficiently the application. That's right.
Yeah, they were both to set public hearing.
Right. And I'll write the court to determine if it's within the standard fair. Okay. I withdraw.
All right. Moved by Michael Fiojo, seconded by Pamela Volpin, to add the two items, Chatham Park Water Reclamation Facility Perimeter Buffer and Proposed Annestation Property Along Eubanks Road to the consent agenda as numbers five and six. Are there any further changes to the consent agenda? Is there a motion to set the consent agenda?
Absolutely.
Moved by Michael Fiojo, seconded by James Farrell, both in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carried. As to the regular meeting agenda, are there, there is a removal of item two from the new business. One of our congressmen needs, the principals who are going to speak to us tonight from the clean tech cluster have not been able to get here. One of them lives in Tampa and one of them lives in Charlotte, and we look forward to having them at a later time. I believe we're looking at the first agenda in October for that, for it to be rejected. With the exception of that, new business being removed, is there any further adjustment to the regular agenda?
Motion to approve the regular agenda.
Sorry. Motion by Michael Fiojo, seconded by James Farrell, both in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right. We have citizens sign up to speak during the citizen's expression period. The first person to sign up is Jim Hinckley. Jim, if you'll come to the podium and give your address and keep your mind.
Madam Mayor, honorable commission members, my name is Jim Hinckley. I am a citizen, a proud citizen of Pittsburgh, and I've lived here since 1981. And in my present situation, I live in Creekside Apartments, which is over behind St. Bart's Church in the cemetery. And I am here to talk to you about the condition of the apartments and also the relationship that we have with, with the management. About forty, forty-five years ago, Creekside Apartments was the premier apartment location in this town. Excellent design and great landscaping. If you haven't been there, it's worth visiting. However, in recent years, the condition of the apartments has deteriorated, and many of the units are seedy, if you understand what that means. And the residents at Creekside Apartments are mostly retired people and also people of lesser needs in the main population. We are, we are in the process now of trying to get the management, Prestige Management on the Greensboro, to do some remedial work and to do some work that will upgrade the condition of the apartments. We have been basically unsuccessful in getting Prestige Management to listen to our needs and to respond to the issues that we have with our apartments. We have had some policing, policing problems there, which you probably know about, and we have situations where the apartments are becoming, in my case, anyway, and then in some other people's situations, they're almost unlivable. Now, I live there because I like the landscaping and I like the architectural design, and I've been lived there since, for about five years now. And the apartment I live in has torn carpeting. It has ceilings that are peeling off and dropping to the floor. The apartment I live in, too, has some leaks, and the air conditioning and the heating is in need of upgrading. And there are a number of other issues that, standing water in the hallways, among others, that I've communicated with Prestige Management and asked them to come and take care of those issues that I have. And a number of other, and there are representatives here from Creekside also, a number of other residents, too, are having comparable problems with, that I have. And we are becoming more frustrated and more unable to deal with our situations because the management is non-responsive. They listen to our phone calls, and they do send people out from time to time to take care of the issues. The drains in my bathroom, for instance, I forgot to mention that, they're not clogged, but they're, they're very dirty. But these issues are, are really beginning to bother us pretty badly.
Jim, if I may interrupt, at our last meeting, we had several speakers with respect to the very same problems. We even had someone bring in a piece of the ceiling tile that had fallen. And then the following Thursday after that, you all were having the homeowners or apartment dwellers meeting. Unfortunately, we were not able to attend that night, but in the meantime, our town attorney, Mr. Metzick, had let us know that there is a code of sorts, a building code of sorts, although it's in severe need of updating and making it more inclusive. But if we could work together with the homeowners group and, and with this newfound information from Mr. Metzick, I do remember that, I believe it was Mary Phillip Horn said that they did respond fairly nicely to political pressure, and we might be able to, to provide that for you. Would that kind of thing be satisfactory?
We've been very fortunate to have Commissioner Bonnet meet with us a couple times and to talk to us about the things that we can do. Now, this board has been excellent in doing things about the infrastructure, water, sewer, over the years. There were some dire situations, as I recall, as I remember. But the board also has a responsibility of looking out for the health and welfare of its, of its citizens. And that might be something new for y'all, a new area to get in, in addition to infrastructure problems. So I am here to request your applying your political weight to help us take care of ourselves and get a response from the owners of the apartments. We have requested them over and over and over again, and we haven't, we've had response but no action. So anyway, I appreciate your hearing. Thank you.
We're very interested, and I'm glad that, that John Bonnet has been able to meet with you.
Yes.
And I fully intend to in the future, and so let's see what we can do together.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
May I appear here, is there possibly a chance to present the landlord a letter regarding this problem with the town letter and possibly a commitment?
I'll be glad to draft something and then run it by Mr. Metzick. Oh, would that be?
Sure.
Okay. When we're doing our, our new ordinance, that we have, provide the protection, we get the standards now. Excuse me. Could you speak up, please?
I don't know if the microphones are on, but I can't hear you back. We don't hear back, Carol.
No, I was just gonna say, I'd like for us to look at our ordinance and, and look at how to get a standard for, for the apartment we have in common here. I think that's what the board talks about.
I think we're gonna discuss a little bit this evening in reference to probably updating the current, current ordinance that we do have in reference to rentals, and maybe including that somewhat, so it can be somewhat of a long time, and very important.
Excellent. Our next speaker is Jim Knopf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Addressing you this evening as a member of the Board of Directors of Main Street Pittsburgh and speaking on their path. We had another productive meeting just last Wednesday at the Towne County Department, and we are all very excited about the direction that we are heading with Main Street Pittsburgh. And one of the items that we have discussed at some length is the reuse of existing buildings in the Main Street District and by extension throughout the downtown area. And we believe that it is in the town's best interest to encourage reuse and redevelopment of the buildings in downtown, particularly if we can attract entrepreneurs that will invest in locally owned destinations such as unique retail shops and restaurants. We truly believe that the retail businesses are at the heart of our downtown if it's going to prosper and stay healthy in the years to come. One method for the town to consider in addressing this encouragement of the reuse of our downtown buildings might be to look at the water and sewer impact fee. According to the budget, the fees are designed to compensate the citizens of Pittsburgh for their investment in water and wastewater treatment facility, with the fee to be based on the volume of capacity needed according to the North Carolina Administrative Code. And while this is a remark, reasonable goal, perhaps the town ought to be able to take a look at that and see what else could be done. For example, a hundred seat restaurant, such as the one currently being built on Salisbury Street, would be charged at an impact fee of $70,200. The fee is based on that 17.55 per gallon times 4,000 gallons per day that the state code stipulates, $40 per seat, 40 gallons per seat. And even with the slight adjustment for the previous use of the building, the fee is still This is a daunting fee for some, haunting fee for someone trying to create a new restaurant in downtown Pittsburgh. We recommend that the town make an adjustment to the access fee, which could perhaps be one of the following ideas or a combination of them. The town utilize the historic use of water or similar business types as the guide for the fee. For example, the restaurants downtown, such as the Roadhouse and other establishments, are historically only using 1,000 gallons of water per day. That could be a rational basis to look at the fee. Or the town could base the fee on the size of the water meter, or the town could keep the same system used and simply lower the impact access fee. The town could explore policy offering of rebates fees to incentivize redevelopment and implement of, redevelopment of existing buildings in town. The Board of Main Street truly believes that our downtown area requires and needs viable, vibrant retail businesses as we move into the future. In any case, we appreciate your time and support the town has provided to Main Street, and I hope that you'll be able to work out some policy change that will help with this redevelopment issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ellen Brooks.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Ellen Brooks, and I live at, I live at 66 Nully Street, and I'm in here to talk about spending and how they're spending the, your constituents' money. I've expressed before that, well, I do know that a capital improvement plan is fluid. I know that because that's what's in the budget. So even though the budget has a $12 million figure under the town hall project, it is fluid. I'm asking you all to put a moratorium on that project. This year, we were to pay, spend $935,000 towards that project. We spent about $909 for the land and the closing costs. We've spent some more money, so we're either a little bit under or a little bit over the $935 that's on my budget. Well, if you decide to have a moratorium, there are some things that you may want to consider. I've been considering it myself. Right now, we rent some office space in Chatham Market, and I think our, this year's budget is set for $33,500. I think that's four people, or how many people are in Chatham Market that work for the town? Six. Okay. Well, that $33,500. Well, what about if we spend $100,000 a year and put that, whatever space that will give us with $100,000 net? To spend $100,000 a year for us to get up to $12 million, it would take 120 years. 120 years. So we spend the 100,000, we're on the moratorium, we spend the 100,000. We get this building situated in a way that it's easier for the staff to work here and in the other buildings that, that our staff works. I think we have about 42 people on the town staff, and I think maybe 10 or 12 or so are out in the fields, so that leaves about 30. So, unless, I'm trying to thought here, give me a second. So, right back. As to getting people settled in those two locations and having them work together, that was kind of where you were headed. Thank you so much. Oh, gosh, I can't think of what I was gonna say. I'll tell you, it is, it is gone. It is gone from my brain. But let's, I'm just gonna re-say what I've said. If you all would consider, seriously consider a moratorium, consider up in that $33,500 annual budget that we have, that we're spending right now to rent the space at Chatham Market. And you know, when we rent space from Chatham Market, Chatham Market pays taxes on it, so it's good for the, for the town. Up that to 100,000, while there's a moratorium, oh, I know what I'm gonna say, and I think maybe we need another engineer. You know, I said that's in our budget. Oh, good, good, 'cause I've been listening to all that, it seems like we're short an engineer. So we could look at spending money instead of the 12 million on the town, on the town hall, we could look at customer service to the customers that we're gonna have, rather than where they go to get the service, rather than where they go to get the service. So would y'all consider a moratorium?
First of all, would you put your comments in writing?
Yes.
And that would help us, and then we'll place it on the agenda upcoming in a minute. Out there. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you. All right. That goes without citizens' matters.
Hey, Perry, I have one thing.
Yes.
Mister Matt, if I'm not mistaken, last meeting, Mister Jones, did you not discuss some of this regarding these fees and all like this at the last meeting that we were looking into, like going back into the history of some of these buildings, what they were?
I think there was a question from the audience as to if there was a more intense use than the past, the previous use, what use would be used? And I said the most intense use as possible. If we can identify what that is, then we would use that.
There, there is, from what I understand, a House bill, I don't remember the name of, or the number of it, is going to mandate some fairly severe revision of, of cost. So I think that that is going to be something that we're gonna be doing upcoming, and I believe that that's gonna be on our agenda, on the cost for applications and building and things like that, as well as any sort of cost. I, under updates, I have only attended one meeting on the 7th of September, which was a Triangle J Council of Government, mayors and chairs meeting. I was very pleased that our own Jim Volpin, Chair of our county commission, is, is chairing that group now, and we had a speaker from the rural urban group talking about the urban and rural divide and how we can bring people together recognizing common needs and, and so. Is there, are there any things that other members would like to take about?
Well, I can add to what Jim said about the Main Street meeting that I attended last Wednesday, and we have a representative from the state there to advise us on how to go about modifying the Main Street boundary if we so desire. And one of the ways to do that would be simply pull this board to modify that boundary. It would have to meet certain criteria, and then we could send it on to the state and they would accomplish that. Our boundary is seven years old, six years old, and when we revisited it, we thought maybe some of the properties didn't make sense to the other, and some that were absent made the list. So the group is gonna look at modifying the boundary and possibly bring it to this board for recommendations.
Anything from the Board of the House or product change?
I have not received an update from the product change meeting last week, and I was, I didn't attend.
So the PBA, the next PBA meeting is this Wednesday, next Monday, in progress.
All right. The Triangle J, Chatham County Commissioners are now going to ask the Triangle J to review for affordable housing and come up with ideas for affordable, not just rental this time, but for purchasing homes. And they are asking members of the public, as well as someone from each one of the councils, from Fall City, from the town of Pittsburgh, and the city, and the town of Boston, to be a part of that as well. And they're also asking members, anyone who are citizens, if they would like to participate in that, on that committee, they, you are certainly welcome. And that was actually in the paper.
When I saw that, I didn't know if you'd be willing to continue, sir, on behalf of the town of Pittsburgh.
I don't know if I can. I'm not sure. No, because that's on other committees for rental, I don't know if they want someone new or whether I can do that. But if no one else on the board can do that, we have to follow.
Let's then do our ceremonial aspect of our agenda, the addition of the resolution by the Board of Commissioners, and it reads as follows. Whereas 16 years ago today, our nation suffered the unfathomable loss of over 3,000 lives in the attack on the Twin Towers and the World Trade Center in New York, the Pentagon in Washington, D.C., and near Shanksville, Pennsylvania. Whereas this is a time to reflect on that tragic loss, which tore across the nation and across the boundaries of national origin, race, economic status of the people in the towers, the Pentagon, and on Flight 93, and out of which our nation came together to recommit to diligence and watchfulness on matters of security. And whereas although the loss was tragically personal to many, it was also monumental to our nation and to us all, citizens, innocent bystanders, first responders, and firefighters, to make us strive even more diligently for protection and peace in many areas of our lives and throughout our community and country. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town Board of Commissioners of the town of Pittsburgh reflects on and recognizes the hope of the town of Pittsburgh as we remember this occasion and as the board recommits to strive for and achieve diligence, peace, and security in the protection of our government, our constituents, our employees, and for the benefit of the people of the town of Pittsburgh. This resolution was approved at a regular meeting of the board on September 11, 2017, and shall be entered into the public records of the town of Pittsburgh, indicating the board's commitment to this remembering. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? That is.
Certainly.
Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, separated by Jay Farrell, both in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you. The next matter is under new business. Jim, I believe we have you back for the ABC.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm now talking to you as Chair of the Pittsburgh ABC Board. And so on behalf of Hugh Harrington and Kelly, my several board members, I wanted to do a couple, three things. One, One, to give you an update on how we got through the fiscal year, what those results looked like, to talk a little bit about our five and twenty-year plan update, and then to ask you to approve a resolution concerning our working capital. So at the end of this past fiscal year, we had another very good year, had revenues of one point four million and a profit of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And both of those numbers are increased over last year. Now, in the previous couple of years, we were growing at double-digit rates, ten to eleven to twelve percent. This year, we're back into the single digits, but still, still growing quite well. Mixed beverage sales, however, have gotten to be just even with last year. So that's something that's of a little concern to us in that it's, it's not growing. So we're keeping an eye on, on that situation. And not only is it a reflection perhaps of how our restaurants are doing here in Pittsburgh, but also from a board perspective, that's a more profitable sale for us than retail. We had a very good audit at the end of the year with no problems to report, and we were able to move our employee health insurance program into the state local employees program. And that provides more stability, better benefits, and actually a lower cost to both the employee and to the ABC Board. So we're pleased to have been able to do that. And we were also able to enact finally, the final piece of our endeavor over the last few years to make the Pittsburgh ABC store a very good place to work with actually some benefits. And we started, as you might remember, where there were no benefits, no vacation time, no sick leave, no health insurance, no retirement plan. And I'm proud to tell you that we have fixed that. We now have gained entrance into the state retirement plan for our employees. So we're very happy about that. Now, in terms of the five and twenty-year plan update, two years ago, I advised you that we were beginning to work on a five-year plan where we projected a new store within that five-year plan, and then a additional store in the twenty-year plan. And of course, that being dependent on the growth that we expected to occur primarily from Chatham Park. Our current five-year plan still has that as a valid set of assumptions. However, we have moved the idea of a new store to the latter end of that five-year period based upon where things are right now. The plan still calls for a continued downtown presence, and I want to say publicly that our current facility remains very viable, and we have no current plans to replace it anytime in the near future.
Thank you.
But this year, we will perform an analysis of the impact of expansion on our current store. That is, if we open another one, how much business will it draw from the existing store? What will that do to our revenue and cost structure? We're gonna do a cost risk analysis on our current store, that is, what it's gonna cost to maintain it over the next few years. We know we've got some heating and cooling, we're gonna have to do that sort of thing, versus what it's worth, versus what somebody else might cost us. And we're gonna do a cost benefits analysis and the idea of using the current store as the warehouse for any projected new store. We simply don't like the idea of paying retail prices for storage. And since we have lots of room for storage in our existing building, we, it may turn out better to serve that new store out of our warehouse than the old store. So we're gonna be looking at that. At the end of twenty-fourteen, fifteen fiscal year, I came to you and suggested and asked you to approve a situation where we could take the amount of working capital over and above what we're allowed to keep without your approval, and work out a sixty-forty split with you, the sixty percent being retained and the forty percent going to the town. And we would put that money towards savings for this new facility that we're talking about and upgrades that were necessary to the old facility. And at the end of fifteen, sixteen, I made a similar request to you, and you again approved it graciously. So for those two fiscal years, we were allowed to retain a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and provide the town with sixty-eight thousand. I'm making the same request again tonight for fiscal sixteen and seventeen. If approved, we would retain ninety-two, four ninety-four and provide sixty-one, six sixty-three to the town. For the three fiscal years, we would have retained then two hundred and nine thousand and provided a hundred and twenty-nine thousand to the town. And that's, of course, over and above our quarterly distributions. Three-year retention of two oh nine, five thirty-nine would put us exactly on target in our five-year plan for the amount of money that we need to put away for the expansion of our new store. So that is my report. And the other thing I just might mention is that we, if this is approved this, tonight, we will have provided during this fiscal year ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-some dollars to the town in total. And I almost thought of asking Fay to write a little check for the difference up to a hundred. And said, well, we'll wait that for us to break that hundred thousand marker for, for next year. So if I take questions--
Fifty-nine forty-one it is.
Sorry?
Fifty-nine forty-one it is.
So I'd be more than happy to take questions or comments, and then I again would ask you to approve again for another year our arrangement of the working capital situation.
Questions from the Board?
Well, I'd just like to thank Jim, Hugh, and the guy who doesn't show up, Ned, for all the work that you're doing. I mean, you've turned it around, you've continued to grow, continued to provide great service to the town, obviously to the employees. The, yeah, too, and the store's fantastic, so appreciate all of that.
Thank you. And the Board appreciates the support of, of this Board and, and our liaison, Commissioner Bioco attends most meetings, and is helpful to us, but we really do feel and appreciate the support of this Board.
Mr. Nuss, I'm curious about the heating and cooling analysis that you mentioned. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Well, we know that we're running out of just years, where eventually there's going to be an issue where we're gonna need to take a look at replacing that heating and cooling unit. And so that and some other issues, we're in a very old building, that's been there for a long, long, long time. We did a remodel, as you remember, a few years ago. But when we're looking at the long term of that building, and then we're looking at what it will cost to keep that building going, that's what we're looking at, including the heating and cooling, just as an example. And then we wanna compare that with what would happen over that time if we made some other arrangements, that is, provided another downtown location, what that would cost, what the building that we're in now and the land it sits on might be worth, so that we can be sensible about where we go and, and what we do as we're moving forward. The Board is, the ABC Board is being very cautious on this business of expansion and this business of the store, simply because we wanna ensure that we are able to provide not only great service to our customers, but also that we are a revenue generator for the town. I mean, I think the reason that myself and Hugh Harrington and Ned Kelly are on that board is because we look at it as providing a benefit and service to the Town of Pittsburgh, not only of providing a, a great store, but of being able to provide funds to the town on a fairly regular basis that can be used for other things without taxation and that sort of thing.
The reason I ask about the heating and cooling equipment is, from our own perspective, my family is residential, we were really surprised at the tremendous amount of savings we gained with new equipment, which is higher efficiency and much greater performance, much greater comfort. So I'm guessing that the equipment in that building is old enough that you're also gonna see a really great leap in efficiency and dollar savings. And I also wanna commend the programs that Duke Energy has for rebates. And I'm not sure what the ABC's English status is, but I would guess that the organization would qualify for their commercial incentives.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. When we remodeled the store, we had the initial expectation of our heating and cooling costs going up because, you know, we took that false ceiling out. But it turns out, we actually saved a ton of money because the return air system was just not working. And by opening that up and with the ducts being properly set up, we had proper return air and actually ended up saving money. But I, no doubt you're correct, that the new equipment would be a huge savings in that respect.
Other questions for Jim from the Board?
I have a question, but thank you, Mr. Nuss. I appreciate all that you've done, and the Board is going to reference to that and the funds that you have given to the town.
Very good. Well, tonight, if you approve this resolution, I have three checks, one for sixty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars to the town, another for ten thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, which is the quarter of the distribution, and then another for one thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars to the Long Book Store.
And is there a motion to effect the retention of the sixty percent working capital?
Salute.
Second.
Moved by John Avon, seconded by Michael Bioco, there's some favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you very much. And now, Mayor, I'd like to present you with these three checks.
Thank you. Please.
Thanks very much.
Next on our agenda, since we're skipping the clean tech cluster, is the number three, Southwest Shore Conservancy, Catherine. That's her agenda.
Thank you. And you have the presentation?
I think I was got it on Friday afternoon at some point. I'm trying to dig it out of here.
Okay. I'm not sure where that title came from. The Southwest Shores Report is an assessment that I was involved in about, I don't know, twelve years ago or something. You know, it's been around for a while. I'm actually here to talk about the recommendations from the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee that came out of the Planning Tools Project. So anyways, I, I appreciate being invited to come and speak to you guys tonight. And this is about a project that we did, we completed two years ago. And actually, we had a work session two years ago in October where we went over these recommendations. And so the presentation that I'm gonna give this evening is essentially that same presentation that I gave two years ago. And what I was asked to do was come and talk about open space, about tree protection, about stormwater, anything that could relate to those areas. And this project, the Planning Tools for Pittsburgh, we worked with a, a committee that we formed and came up with recommendations for tree protection and for natural resource conservation ordinance. So that's what I'm gonna talk about. This slide here shows all the project partners that worked on that project. This was a project that was funded by the Forestry Service, the Town of Pittsburgh approved, being used as a demo for developing these, these ordinances that these recommendations came out of. So they were part of the project, but we had a number of other project partners too. And these are all, all organizations that worked on the project. They're not just supporting the project, but they actually, the work went into the project. My, my primary role was facilitation, and then also I did a lot of the, the analysis that went into the project.
You have a remark?
Oh, I do. Oh, excellent, and I don't have to, oh, you, okay. Okay. I just learned how to use it. Okay. So like I said, I was asked to talk about open space, tree protection, and stormwater. And so I thought first, there's two slides that I added to this, and this is one of them. First, I kinda taught, make that connection. So typically, when we see development these days, this is what we see. We, we, this, I don't know how many of you recognize this site. I, I still know this site. It's near Woods Charter School and Margaret Pollard. This used to be a forest up until, I don't know, six years ago or something. And when it was to be developed, all that forest was just completely cleared, and the site was graded. And we, there was construction ponds put in. But this is what happens with typical development still these days, is that the site is cleared, it's graded, the soils are compacted, and that completely destroys any ability of the site to deal with the stormwater. It basically becomes an impervious site because its topsoil is removed, the canopy is removed. This is from a study that, you know, I'll check me here, a study that was done by Dr. Barrett Keyes, who is a well-known soil scientist and urban landscape planner in North Carolina. And he did this study in Charlotte, and what it does is it looks at and compares the forest, a forest site to other sites that have been cleared, and they have different layers of soil left. But basically, it shows that the infiltration rate with a forested site is fourteen times more at least than a site that's been cut and compacted, such as the site that we were just looking at. And so I, one of the points I wanted to make is we're talking about tree protection, and we're talking about open space. When we're talking about this sort of infiltration, you're getting this sort of infiltration from a natural forest, from a forest that hasn't been cleared and replanted. You're getting this sort of infiltration from open space, that's natural open space that has not been turned into open space. I mean, open space has a lot of definitions right now, and they're all appreciated. But when you're connecting open space and tree canopy to stormwater, you need to make sure that you're looking at a protected tree canopy, not a replanted tree canopy. And you're looking at open space that still has that, that topsoil there. Okay.
What is U D S D N D?
You have to go and read it. I went and looked at the, the paper this came out of, and those are just indications of the different sites that he did. So this is, this is pulled from, from a, from a presentation that was done on, by Dr. Barrett Keyes, and that's Howie Lake, what was your name? I also had that question. I haven't looked into it. So now, this is the presentation that some of you guys saw two years ago, but you probably don't remember that much. Anyway, so out of the Planning Tools Project, we developed, well, we worked on two model ordinances, the Natural Resource Conservation Ordinance, which was developed by the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission and by Duke University. We also worked on developing, it actually was developed as part of this project, a guide for tree protection ordinances for North Carolina. So this is a guide that the North Carolina Forest Service is using for many small towns in, in the state. So we took both of those model ordinances, and we formed a committee based on town recommendations of who needs to be on that committee, and went through those model ordinances and developed recommendations to meet the ordinances for the Town of Pittsburgh. These are the people that were on that committee, and basically, the goal was to develop recommendations on what would have to be done to implement, or ways to implement those two ordinances, not that they have to be done. This is a slide that, actually, I put this slide in at the work session, and maybe I should have taken it out. This is a slide that shows all the things that were in your packet when we had the work session. What actually you were given, I think, for today, in addition to this presentation, is just the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee's recommendations for the, so the number, what is the, number three and four. But all these other materials are, are on a website for the Channel Conservation Partnership, and I'll share that with you at the end of the presentation. You can always access that. So we're gonna start by talking about the recommendations that came out for the, for tree protection ordinance. And so the first recommendation that we came up with-- And so the first recommendation that we came up with, and actually, I should mention this first. Gosh, I have. This Conservation Ordinance Review Committee, it met for six months for, I think, every, every other week, three hours. This was a long discussion to come up with these recommendations, and a lot of volunteer hours that went into it. So anyways, the first thing that we came up for the tree ordinance is that we wanted to recognize that to actually do tree protection and to have a tree protection program, you're really talking about more than just a tree protection ordinance. You're talking about a tree protection ordinance, a street, and, or a landscape ordinance. You're talking about, at least, we were recommending that you have a tree technical manual. And if you think about the stormwater additional element that Chatham Park has come up with, they have a stormwater technical manual that goes with that program that they're proposing. This is very similar with a tree technical manual. You can, you can make changes to that and updates to that much more easily than you can to the actual ordinance. It's more of a working document. We recommended that you establish a tree board, and Pittsboro eventually applied to be part of the city. So the actual recommendations for the rest of the recommendation ordinance, I mean, documents that you have in front of you are actually looking at that first one, tree protection ordinance. And these are the sections that the guide suggested being in a tree protection ordinance. And what I'm going to look at quickly here with you is Section Two and Section Three on applicability and tree protection standards. Now, there are recommendations in that document that you have in front of you for each one of those sections. But, you know, I suspect you don't want me here forever, so we're going to talk about this. So first of all, for applicability, that is where actually does this apply? And this is one of the things that we have a lot of discussion about. It is really important to understand actually where the tree protection ordinance is going to apply. And obviously, it is to protect existing canopy specifically during new development. Okay? And so it's important that it applies prior to the planning process, that you identify what your existing canopy is, and you, and those protections are put in place before the property begins to be developed. And one of the things that the, the committee was very concerned about was avoiding having sites clear cut. This is something that happens occasionally where land will be treated as timberland and then clear cut, and then come back and developed. And, and that can destroy a piece of property as far as how it deals with stormwater and its natural resources. So one of the things that we recommended was that you use the language that isn't one of the, that's in actually Morristown Tree Protection Ordinance, or to have some language in the tree protection ordinance that makes this, keeps this from happening. In the language in Morristown, what they do is they say, once a site has been identified that it's going to be developed, then the development, if it is cleared before the planning process begins, then that site has to wait for three years before they start actually developing that site. So you can put restrictions in to keep that from happening. And I have in the document that you have there exactly the wording that was used for that. Another thing is that sites that are too small should be exempted from, from the tree protection ordinances. And here, we, are sites that, where they're being developed, a small piece of it's being developed. And the exemption that we came up with, based on discussions with the town engineer and with all the committee members, so many of who are, you know, work on tree protection, was the disturbance areas of 7,000 square feet are to be exempt from protection. And I did the math today just to remind myself, that's 0.16 acres. If you look at Chatham Park's additional elements, they're suggesting two acres. So this is a big difference. So the second section that I wanted to talk about was the actual tree protection standards. There are a number of ways to do tree protection. The way that we were suggesting and the way the U D O and Chatham Park is suggesting is actually having a minimum tree canopy requirement. And we looked at all the towns within North Carolina that have tree protection ordinances and at what their minimum tree protection standards were. And we also looked at what the town of Pittsboro's current tree coverage is. So what their current canopy, your current canopy as of 2013, when we were doing this project, when we have land cover change analysis done as part of the Planning Tools Project, the canopy for the town limits of Pittsboro is 53%. Current, well, in 2013, it was 53%. I took that data set, and I did an analysis to figure out what a, what the downtown tree canopy was. And it was 14%. So we looked at that, plus we looked at what other towns were using, and came up with these minimum tree requirements. 15% for downtown district, 30% for multifamily and commercial, 40% institutional mixed use and other. And this is very typical. Let's see, I think Greensboro, 38% tree canopy coverage is what they're aiming for. These are the amounts that are being used in Chapel Hill, except for the downtown district. And then the minimum tree, the minimum canopy coverage below, which is based on lot size for single and two-family residential, that is what Chapel Hill uses for their minimum canopy cover, if you look at their tree ordinance. So that gives you, you know, I, you want to, I would think that you would want to at least match what other towns in the same eco, the same eco regions are using, so other towns in the Piedmont. Okay. So the other part of the tree standards, the tree protection standards, was preservation of specimen trees and clusters of trees. And clusters of trees, once a cluster of trees was determined, that cluster should have a minimum area of 500 square feet. And so that's something that came out of talking to the Forest Service and to the Wildlife Resource Commission. So I know that you've been looking at some of those buffers that should be included in your tree protection area for your U D O and for the Chatham Park, and that gives you a number to maybe compare that to, that tree cluster area. That's, so that's not on the slide, but that is in the document that you have, that minimum. So the other thing is a specimen tree. So in addition to protecting canopy and clusters of trees, you also want to protect specific specimen trees. And this is something that, I mean, in all the ordinances that you're looking at, it's also the thing that I most heard about from the beginning, when people were talking about protection of trees in Pittsboro, is people were very attached to specific trees, and how can we make sure that those trees are just, are protected and not taken down without consideration? So specimen trees, any healthy living pine tree that has a trunk diameter of 18 inches or more at diameter of breast height. Okay? For other trees, that diameter would be 12 inches. And then I, we also recommended a trunk diameter breast height of six inches or more for species of trees that are native to North Carolina that are in this list. Now, this is a list of some of our best-loved understory trees that we would love to continue seeing in our, in our environment. If you look at the tree protection ordinance that is in the U D O, they have exactly this definition for specimen tree, except they leave off that last bit. So in the way the U D O is written, you would move these trees, because these trees do not get to 12 inches. Okay? In general, you may be able to go find a dogwood that has a 12-inch diameter, but it's highly unlikely. So if you want to be protecting your understory trees, then you need to add, add that to your, your definition for specimen tree. Okay. So now we're going to switch gears and talk about the Model Natural Resource Conservation Ordinance. Now, this is a model ordinance that the Duke University and the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission have been developing for the Greensboro school box. We're not the first town that they used this on. This model ordinance, it was modeled on a couple other towns, but they certainly refined it in working with us. But with the, what we did to actually, okay, let me step back a second. So what I've shown here is the different sections, again, that are in the model ordinance. Okay? And I have checked off the three sections I'm going to talk about. The recommendations that are in your document are for all six of the sections. So we're going to talk about the Natural Resource Conservation Overlay District, the standards, and the definitions, which are kind of the meat of the Pittsboro ordinance. So to talk about the overlay district, we first have to step back and, and look very quickly at how an overlay district is developed. And this is using the steps that are given in the Greensboro school box that the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission has developed. It's also based on the North Carolina Natural Heritage Program Conservation Planning Tool. And so in that planning tool, they have this biodiversity and wildlife habitat analysis, and we completed that for Pittsboro. And this gives you the results of that analysis. And there is, one of the summary reports that you don't have in front of you this time, but you did last time, gives you a complete summary of all the layers that go into that analysis. And if anybody needs to have that again, just let me know, and I can get it for you. You can go find it on Chatham Conservation Partnership's website. But anyways, what is shown here is that anything that has a conservation value of 1 to 10 has conservation value. Okay? 10 being the highest. Anything that's white with no conservation value has no conservation value that, resources that went into this. So you can look at this, you can see that Pittsboro has a wealth of conservation, of natural resources. So, and the black actually is impervious surfaces. So to do this analysis, you basically need to knock out anything that's already developed, because you're not going to be conserving that. So I did this analysis for Pitts, for Silver City as well, and they came back and they said, we want to be retrofitting and revitalizing our downtown and turning it into green space. They had me go back and look at those impervious surfaces and figure out what they could do to bring green space in and get rid of impervious surface. So that would be an interesting thing to do. I was impressed. I did not come up with that. They did. So, but that's not what we did. So when we looked at this, and we shared this with town staff, they said, okay, for the conservation overlay district, let's look at conservation values from 5 to 10. Let's start with that. Those are higher values. Okay? So this is what it looks like from 5 to 10. Okay? And just looking at this, I can remember that has some of the larger forests in it, that has the natural heritage areas in it, it has a lot of the waterways that are shown in blue. So that's primarily what you're looking at there. And this, this map here in the corner there, we actually did the analysis for all the seven waterships that drain Pittsboro. So then we cut out and clipped it just to Pittsboro side, so that we wouldn't actually lose any of those layers. Okay? So, taking into account that analysis, and then also, also town staff said, let's put a thousand-foot buffer on the, on the Hall River. So we also included that. Actually, that was just, that might be a typo. I think it might actually be 2,000 feet. But anyways, we put the buffer on the Hall River. And then we went back and looked at specific natural resources. We looked at unfragmented forests, and we looked at isolated wetlands. We included those, too. You can see a number of almost circles there. That's where we have isolated wetlands. There are a number of isolated wetlands in the more, in those bigger areas, but they're included. So this would be, this was the overlay district that we, that the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee recommended. And basically, it has, it had, we tried to, in addition to protecting the natural resources, we tried to connect them all using the riparian areas. Because this is partly for biodiversity and wildlife habitat, because it's a mute how those natural corridors and the, and the riparian areas lended themselves to that. One of the things that's really cool about this, if you step back and actually look outside of Pittsboro, the ETJ, with all the managed land that is around Pittsboro because of the Hall River and Jordan Lake, all of these areas are connected, except for that one that is the Lesler Forest that's over there to the west. So that there is actually a way to go from one area to the other through natural habitat, which is very cool. And so, you know, Pittsboro has a lot of that already now. And then we identified basically primary conservation hub, the water supply area that basically protects Brooks Creek, which is the creek that drains directly to Pittsboro's water supply behind the dam, the Robeson Creek slopes, sinking creek area down there in the bottom, Camp Creek headwaters. Camp Creek is your highest water resource as far as it has the best water qualities in the town. And Robeson Creek, I'm sure most of you guys know, it's a care for benthic life, or benthic aquatic life, and Camp Creek is in good shape. It's the one creek that's in really good shape. It's the one creek that's in really good shape. So we were looking to protect that forest that's around Camp Creek.
Can you please highlight Camp Creek?
Yeah, can I, can I?
Go laser.
Oh, does it? I didn't even.
No, you won't from that angle.
No, from that angle, oh, maybe I.
Get him my stepping ground.
But it's right here. Okay, so Camp Creek is this creek. Okay, so this is, this is Robeson Creek. This is Brooks Creek that goes to the water. And then that's, and that's, are the forests, the headwaters of, of all those creeks. Okay, Catherine, I'm trying to figure out how we can manage. We've been, I'm, I'm almost done. Okay, thank you. Yes, that, that will. And what I'll do is there's some complicated parts right here, and we'll just go through them quickly. Okay. So what you do on a conservation overlay district is that you have three steps if development happens in a conservation overlay district, is that site survey is conducted and based on what that site survey finds, then a percentage of that site is protected. And that depends on what the standard is. So the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee suggests 50% of that up to, and that's up to, and that's the confusing part. And then also there is a limit on the maximum impervious surface of the track. So what that means is if you were going to develop Site A, okay, you went out and you did a survey and you found this much natural resources with high significant natural resource areas here, then at 50%, and that's, that's a number that contains based on what standards we set, then 50% of the total site would be protected, okay? Now, if you went out to a site, say Site C, and you found that natural resources were at less than 50%, then you would only protect where the natural resources were. It does not mean that you protect every site at 50%. So these are the sites that are in the, like. Yeah, that are actually in the conservation, those ones that are much of the site that come in. And now you guys, in your UDO, there is a conservation overlay district, a natural conservation overlay district written into the UDO, in the two, the proposed UDO, and this is how it works. So you should look at it. It is not the same as the, a district that I showed you. It is the, the water resources. So it doesn't include all of those, but it's, it's a significant district. And these, and these recommendations of these numbers is what's been used in that, in that overlay district. So that's partly why I want to make sure you guys understand this, is so that you can understand what's in the, in the UDO, what's being recommended. And so this is how the impervious surface part of it works. It's similar to the other part. I'm, if you guys are, please don't, I'll go back to it later because I know we're short on time. There is one more really important part of, of how this conservation overlay district works, and that is the definition of what a significant natural resource area is. Because depending on what those definitions are, that's when you go out and survey the property, that's what you're looking for, is what is a significant natural resource area. And this is an example of some of the ones that were suggested being in, that were recommended to be included in significant natural resource area. That definition, if you look at it in your documents, includes 19 different types of habitats, okay? So these are just examples of some of those habitats. And one of the things that, you guys have a lot of really cool rock top blocks that create a really interesting natural habitat in Pittsburgh area and your isolated wetlands. So anyways, if you go and look into the UDO, it also has a list of significant natural resource areas to be protected. It has a much smaller list, but it has a very good list. So there will probably be places that I would recommend be put back in, but in a, they do a good job. I cannot, not off the top of my head. Okay. And, and one of the things that they did in that that's interesting is that they took the biodiversity and wildlife habitat assessment, not the one we did, but the state does it for, for the state, and they included some of those rankings and they said, "Anything that's above, I think, an eight." I think, I'm just remembering. My memory is kind of skiffy sometimes. So I think they said eight and above be included as a natural resource. So that, that was an interesting way to do it. So I would have to compare exactly what is in the state's biodiversity and wildlife habitat is ranked at eight and above and to be sure about that. Or, maybe to the work session. So anyway, this is my, my summary page here. Anyone who's interested in looking at this anymore, this is the website, chathamconservation.com, project summary. If you go and Google Chatham Conservation Partnership Wiki, you'll find this page. It's also in the presentation, okay? So yes, I will come to, I, I plan to come in case you guys have anything to ask me on the 21st. And I appreciate, I know this is a long presentation. I, I was saddened and asked how much time I had. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you very much. Next question.
Catherine, thank you so much for your time. I want to recognize that you're giving your time and as a professional with a tremendous amount of expertise and experience in this, I greatly appreciate the time that you've invested and how you continue to invest in helping remind us of the work, you know, and what the larger committee did.
Yeah, we have an amazing committee that worked on this, and they put so much time and effort into it. It was, it was a, it was a great group to work with. So, yeah, and I, I want to see that work used. So thank you. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is the preliminary subdivision plat review for Collector Road A. Victoria Vale will lead up to the dip for Chatham Park in five.
Okay, we have Thompson Street subdivision. Chatham Development One Incorporated has submitted plans for review. The location of the road subdivision is north of Thompson Street and east of Pittsburgh Fire Tower Road. The proposal is to subdivide 26.9 acres into 29 lots. The lots average 11,794 square feet in size. The land is zone PDD. The Pittsburgh subdivision regulations require streets to be bordered by sidewalks on both sides. However, this developer is requesting an exception for the modified cul-de-sac here, which our ordinance classifies as a loop street. Staff is recommending approval of the exemption request and preliminary plat. The planning board reviewed these plans at their meeting on July 5th. Board recommended approval of the preliminary plat and the sidewalk exemption for the loop street.
I don't know if I have questions for Victoria. I had a pretty good correspondence today with the family about numerous questions that I had about this, and so I still have some that remain, I don't need clarity on. I don't know if that will be.
The engineer. I see all kinds of red marks on Michael, Michael Sheed here. You want, do you want the engineer or do you, or do you want to answer the question?
Fred is here. He mentioned he was today. Well, a couple of things that this plan shows a 10-foot wide multi-use trail, the terminology use, along Thompson Street. And it goes beyond the project frontage, but falls just short Fire Tower Road, probably by about 20 or 30 feet. And I'm questioning that it be extended to Fire Tower. There's also a sidewalk at a east, well, there is no sidewalk here, on the east side of Collector Road at Thompson, sidewalk stops at a head cap ramp. And I'm asking that sidewalk go at least to the property frontage along Thompson, and if possible, to go all the way to Julian Court. That will help connect two roads, two existing communities with this walking and multi-attack in Chatham Park. So I understand there may be issues with going beyond the frontage to the east to Julian, and so I would just ask that if arrangement can be made with the property owner, if easements are required for construction of that sidewalk. Obviously, the sidewalk would be in public right of way, but if it goes, if construction requires going beyond that, that it occur only if there's agreement with those property The other questions I have really are a bit technical in nature, and it has to do primarily with this easement that's being called out on the backside of the lots, called 45-foot drainage access line, and how that water is conveyed from the lots to the storm drainage devices that are to manage the peak flow and the treatment. And I'm not sure that I understand, seems there may be a conflict in one of the answers that you had provided earlier, Robbie, and it was that lots 23, well, there were several lots that are being collected in the drainage system, and yet the rest of the lots, I'm assuming, maybe indirectly, that the lots will be built and the houses will drain to that easement, the impervious surfaces, and it won't be collected and conveyed to the stormwater management systems. So how, how does that meet the standards of peak flow management?
Good evening, Robbie Oden, Windsor, Nevada, here on behalf of Chatham Park Investors. Good question on that, and then to go back to the address, your first two comments. Extending the multi-use trail to Fire Tower Road, we agree 100%. I think it looks like on the conceptual plan that it's just short. You know, the plan is to extend it to Fire Tower Road. So, and along Thompson Street, we can certainly extend, I'm thinking either sidewalk, bypass sidewalk or multi-use trail all the way to the west eastern side of the boundary. And I agree, we, we just need to look at the right way and possibly what can be done beyond that because right now there's not enough room there with the ditch and the existing landscape and the fence that was built, so accommodate that without acquiring additional easements. So to the storm drainage, we, just to give a little background, there has been a storm management plan that's about this, I think Alicia has a copy of it submitted, and the way we're looking at this is a point of analysis for this development. So that includes about 115 acres for this. So we have went back and, just to get a little bit more accurate, we started looking at this site over a year ago. So we went back and looked and, and made some adjustments. The first layout we had, you know, we had roads and crossing this natural drainage area back here that you're identifying between those lots. We came back, exactly, we came back and redid the lot layout. So rather than encroaching in that, we've got lots backing up to that natural drainage area. So part of the reason we're putting this 40, 45-foot drainage easement here is to, to protect and preserve that. We're not wanting to propose them to clear that and pipe it like you would in a lot of places. That's the easy answer. We could come in there and pipe that, have a BMP down at the bottom just ahead of the riparian buffer. But instead of doing that, we came back and revised our BMP down here next to the entrance that you see, and that's a combination of really bringing the P's and making it a min and water feature with the green and all that, that you can see it on the plans. But what we're able to do is put the storm drainage going upside these lots, and the reason I say the only reason we did that is even these lots, one of these lots here, we, you know, we would like to let the roof leaders and those lots, they naturally fall down the hill there and just let that disperse into the riparian buffer. With those, we're putting storm drainage back in there and picking all of those with the roof leaders. So all that will be going down to the stormwater control device to the south here. These lots up here, the way it's been designed, some of that area will bypass the stormwater management plan there, or the stormwater control device down here at the bottom. So it is designed for that, and we've gone back and looked at alternatives, and, you know, the other option was to come back and have another BMP. So what we've been trying to do is make a regional BMP and get as much water in there as possible while still maintaining this natural open space, natural drainage feature in here. Keep in mind that the area that is going to be to the east of Collector Road, those planners will come in and have to do their own stormwater devices. So, and, and the idea is that, again, that's areas can be protected, but have a drainage easement there just to, for the town and for the people who are behind those lots. Look at easily natural drainage area, and then you come back 10 years from now, people go down there and, you know, they're building playgrounds in there, they're doing, encroaching in those areas where now you'll have that easement on that, on a plat that a town can regulate, but you don't have structures within that, and it is maintained and protected.
So I'm curious, what, what rights are granted in that easement and who are they granted to?
Yeah, that's a good question. In the past, and that's totally up to the town, I guess, goes to legal and how the town staff and how the town wants to record and regulate that. In the past, we've gone back and forth, a lot of them just have different opinions. You know, a lot of them wanted it to be private, was public. Well, we, personally, what I like to do is just call it storm drainage easement. And then rather than calling it private or public, and what you can do is, you know, I would say the other you have public, and that gives public and private, but that's really on the town to decide how you want to call these out. I mean, and so we're open for discussion on that. The idea is that you just make sure you have something dedicated on a plat that is called out so that it does give, one, it prevents the lots and homeowners from developing in there, and then it gives, like you're saying, access for the public or the private to get in there, maintain that, give me the private. And we, and that's the thing about some, you know, and I would agree, but some places we look at it and say, "Well, you've got a road that's going to discharge to those areas." So again, it's, it's, you know, we look at it both ways, it's really up to the town to decide how you want to call that out.
What would be the land cover, excuse, the land cover on that storm drainage easement?
It will remain, the idea is when we, to remain as it is. The only thing we're proposing, what we'd like to do, we've done a plus take for this area in here, so you've looked at it, and it's just a local, and it's not like, you know, this is paper or anything like that. We've looked at a local, the, the buildout upstream here, looking at the ultimate flows of water coming in through here. of water coming in through here. And what we're proposing is to keep that wooded, keep it as is. But then, on the back of these lots, is that you, we may have to go in there and provide, and we've already provided minimum finished floor elevations in case they want to do any basements down there. It's just good engineering practice. A lot of places don't do that, it's just we've come in there and done that. So that area would remain wooded. And then, the idea is that lots, you would make sure that the lots either meet that minimum finished floor elevation. And again, this is just paper basements. It's not like we're, it's just a natural drawdown there. So, and then you may grade at the rear of those lots and as needed, to bring up the rear of their, you know, the backyard, you might say, to stay out of, to keep it above the hundred-year elevation. Rather than just saying, okay, it is what it is, we've already looked at what it would be and what a hundred-year elevation might look like in there. So that drainage easement will remain undisturbed. And we're trying to minimize, if we do anything, there's going to be some lag, right? Because we walk in, we want to preserve that.
I'm confused, Robbie. You said that if you would like it to remain, would it?
Yes.
Then you're bringing in a discussion of grading. Would that mean the grading would move into the storm drainage easement? That, that fill would be created in there?
No, the, it's, if you look at, you can't sit with a toe, but there's areas that may be in or in and out there. So I would say the majority of that will remain undisturbed. What we're proposing is anything, if we need to do any grading, it would be on the rear of the lot, not within the easement.
So some of the spaces are not necessarily below, there's, there's storm drainage easement, but they're not necessarily up down?
Yeah, all that, that area that you see, that's, that's all, that is all.
There's a natural drainage area to preserve.
And the reason we have this, because, you know, as you can imagine, some of those places, you know, are wider, it's not, you know, what is wider than the others. So we, it's, we could put a twenty-foot in there, be entered in there, but we're being, trying to be a little bit conservative in that and provide a forty or forty-five-foot easement in there, so.
So is there something on the plat that's going to demarcate this easement as an undisturbed area? And then the lot owner knows they cannot disturb that area?
It will be called out as an easement that you just mentioned earlier, as a, you know, drainage and access easement. As far as being undisturbed, you're still allowed to go in there and perhaps do something in regards to.
The owner's going to own the lot.
Right.
The full extent of the lot.
Right.
He just has to be aware that his neighbors, stormwater is going to drain through his lot in that location. And that's all it is.
Right.
They can cut down the tree if they wanted to. If the, if the property wanted to cut down the tree, they could.
It's two point five, looks like that's the intention. Tree cover area plan?
Yeah. We, I might get Chuck there, we can get through that discussion. Two different things when you're getting in and start getting into tree coverage area. That is protecting tree coverage area that is regulated and maintained, that will be tracked, and it stays undisturbed. There's going to be plenty of areas in Chatham Park just like this that will remain undisturbed and have tree canopy area. But it still allows, because, and one of the reasons is that, is that in Chatham Park element, in the current element, tree coverage is not allowing private lots. So that's, that's one of the reasons is, you know, ideally, we would take credit for that, but we're not trying to take credit for that as tree coverage area. Even though, when you look at this, you know, five years from now, it will be tree canopy.
Did you have some additional questions tonight?
I, I'm concerned about that area, only that I've seen it's a choice such as this, where neighbors do obstruct the drainage and they back up water along another neighbor. Because there's nothing saying we can't do that. And it ends up being wrong.
But it's a private problem, not a public problem.
Right.
Yeah. And I can't imagine why you want to have a public easement in there.
To ensure that the stormwater goes where it's supposed to go.
And nowadays, most places wouldn't even identify that as a drainage easement. I, I will say that that's good planning, good engineering to identify now, have it on the plat. Most places that you have around town, or even, I'm not saying old buildings, even newer plants, they would not identify that. So it's, we've looked at it and we're trying to identify and do a good job of planning engineering and to protect the town and citizens in the future that we identify that and have it on the recorded plat.
That's a big small.
Yeah.
I think that was it. Thank you, Ken.
Robbie, I have sort of a question on the same, same page. The, the area meets the east of the base of Collector Road A at the intersection with Thompson Street. Let me understand why that has to be a tree restoration area rather than tree preservation area?
We are preserving that. The reason we say tree restoration is because the trees in there, the quality that's there does not meet necessarily what we envisioned. And I don't think that you would envision as a, a mature hardwood canopy area. We're not proposing to go in there and clear that. We would go in there and enhance it. That's, it's, that's the reason, that's the only reason we chose is that the existing tree quality in there is just not that great. So that's the reason we would, and we could just, we could easily just say this tree, first, you know, just, and it is tree preservation, we've already recognized it, we would like to enhance it.
So there's some, maybe some specimens in there that would be left.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Plus perhaps additional ones.
That's right.
And are the trees that were mentioned in the presentation tonight, the understore trees, may not be that big hardwoods, but they're still a quality tree.
And that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's, that, and that's the reason we're, that area there, I mean, I've walked this lot multiple times, Chuck's walked it, we've had members of our, several members of our team walked this lot. But that area there, that's the reason is that we're not interested in clearing that at all, so.
I also want to bring up, you've heard the residents, the adjacent neighborhood come up, come in and say, we'd like to see a berm, we'd like, they'd like to see various things. And we, I think we told you that we're going to hold off on the decision until we do exactly what kind of impact they have from headlights or things like that. There could be clearing associated, you're not going to put a berm in there without clearing. We don't prefer to do a berm, they may request that we do a berm. So we're just leaving those options open. And I think the wording was, it was phrased that way just to allow that area to, to be graded with berms, if that was the solution to get the adjacent property to report. But, but the intent is to keep as many trees in there other than that as there are right now. And then, as Robbie said, it's important to us because of its location, that it look a certain way. So we are going to be going in there and planting other trees to enhance the canopy. And I think once you, if you walked it tomorrow, you'd understand what he's talking about, the quality of the canopy that's in there right now. I mean, there could be some trees that are that big and may meet canopy standards, but the quality, because it's been a fully wooded situation, it was just not, not very, it's just not high-quality trees, but you can, you could. Pardon? Okay, well, that, I didn't see you here. So spoken from the adjacent property owner that it's ugly. So we're, we're going to try to improve that.
Okay. Chuck and Robbie, I really appreciate those explanations, that elaboration. I'm curious, though, even though it's ugly, it provides some buffering, some cushioning, some sound absorption and wood during construction. And so are y'all in communication with neighbors about maybe phasing that, about?
Take it what?
Taking it a step at a time, like leaving it as is and then coming in.
That's abs, that's abs, you couldn't have, I couldn't have stated it any better. I mean, that's absolutely what we prefer to do, but that's sort of phasing look.
So leave it as is during construction?
Leave it as is.
And then come in?
Like I said, what we would like to do, this is the view right here that impacts then, and we want to get that graded so you can, you know, is the car then three feet below their floor elevation, is it three feet above their floor elevation? What exactly, or how that can be impacted? And then we make the determination. So it is a phasing, step-by-step approach to addressing the issue.
I appreciate that, I had the same question of what is the width on that back buffer on that property? On that tree preservation on the back of Julian?
What's going on?
The closest point. Right here at the corner, Jay, or is it out here?
No, the, the corner and going back to, going back east.
Okay. This, that, well.
Right there, you go.
Yeah, well, starting here, I'll answer that first.
Okay.
This is roughly forty to forty-five feet from that corner to the, it's back of curve. So that would be to the back of curve. And I was looking at the road grades.
And then to the sidewalk, I think it would be roughly thirty feet.
I guess, I'm, I'm talking about the width, I'm looking on the tree protection, the width on the back of the property of Julian. If that's the way I'm looking at it, for the tree preservation area.
Yep.
What is the width, I'm just curious what that width is there for?
That width there, you've got an area that is, and that's going to be on the Thales site plan, that's what, that's, you know, not, that's coming up forty soon. But that width there, you're looking at, I wanted to scale it out. Between the total bring there, Mr. Faro is, is about fifty feet.
Okay.
So, maybe more than that, maybe sixty, but that's, that's where I'm thinking of it.
Kate, do you understand what the gentleman are saying, you're with respect to the image of your property?
I have understood for over a year. And Mr. Smith and Mr. Rose have laid out a plan and showed me and my neighbor. And I understand that I'm the closest, I'm, I'm the person up on the corner, in case anybody's interested. And between the end of their sidewalk and the beginning of my little quarter acre, there's fifteen feet. And, and Mr. Smith did that, was at the planning meeting. And they're not changing the berm, and that's the way it is.
They're also willing to do berming or?
We don't want a berm.
Elevation.
I mean, my neighbor once talked about a berm. And I understand, and he's right, that creating a berm would just tear up more property and more land and more trees. And, I mean, I, I don't really think anybody wants it now.
Okay. And we said we're in.
It just can't be enabled, wanting a berm. She isn't going to come to meetings anymore. So I want a fence, I want a tall eight-foot fence.
We're going to be there with you the whole time.
And, and I want to know, when the road is built, will the construction for the Thales Academy go up that road also?
It has no other way to get there.
Well, yeah, that's what I thought. It's not just a road behind me, it's a big construction thing. So I want my fence.
It sounds like Chuck is willing to do that. Thank you very much.
What?
I just wanted to make sure that, that you're satisfied.
I understand, and I think that Mr. Smith is very happy to work with me. I don't, I'm not happy that it's going to be fifteen feet. And from that edge of my property, there's only twenty-five feet to my back steps. So it's real close, and I don't have much property. But I'll just have to see what happens next.
Thank you. Were there further questions from the board regarding some of the aspects that engineering?
No, I would say the very first thing that I looked for was the pipelines. Sidewalks and the multi-use trails, and I'm happy to say that they are all there. So this is a multimodal, although I did ask the question about transit. And they have considered transit, and I think that's going to be revealing itself in the next phase more in the circle.
Did you say we have it?
No, you have.
Okay. I just, I can tell you right now, what we're planning on doing, just because of some design elements that are there, we're planning on putting some kind of structure at that corner that can be, just because of the view being important there, as you come down that street, that's an important location to us. And we've got an opportunity to turn that boat into something that would be an amenity as well as taking care of our bus stop or something like that. And you'll see that when we turn it into a site plan building.
So that's what the consequences are?
Right, not north of the, right. That's where the, okay.
That's great. I think that's an appropriate location.
Appreciate the protection of these specimens, Ray, gentlemen.
Yes.
Here, here.
All right, is there a motion to? Is the board in a point where it wants to consider it a motion? A motion to approve or is it approved or to an area class?
I want a motion to approve with the extension of a multi-use trail or this sidewalk that is struck.
Okay.
Motion by Michael Fiacco, second is by John Vonniss. Those in favor, please, can you hit by saying aye?
Aye.
Good folks. Thank you. Victoria, I believe you're with us here on the business, we're taking up this special use permit on growing Little Tyke, learning at Chatham. And while we still have folks here, let me simply remind everybody that we have a work session on the twenty-first of September. And, and so we need to be well-prepared for that, to make the most of the time that we have. If you have questions, board members, ahead of time, if you would submit those to Chatham Park, they will be very willing to either meet if you want an individual basis, or to prepare written responses to the questions that you submit. And it will make our work sessions go and flow much better, I think. I'd also like, at this point, to recognize Courtney Chu, who is an intern who will be with us upcoming through the next few months, I guess. And Courtney, are you with the UNC Journalism Group?
Yes, UNC Journalism.
And she'll be reporting on, on issues that are here of course, board. Welcome. So now we're at old business number one, special use permit for Little Tyke. Victoria?
Amanda McGreen is requesting a special use permit to operate the daycare facility at Seventy-Five Gold Graham Road and the Office in Institutional Homing District. The applicant will be making no external additions or alterations other than the direction of a fence to unclose the flight area. The daycare will be able to accommodate eighty-five children and twelve staff members. For daycare of this size, the ordinance requires twenty-one parking spaces, which can be accommodated by the current parking lot. At their September meeting, at their September sixth meeting, the planning board recommended approval of the request, and about a six to zero, staff is also recommending approval of the request, subject to the state. Any questions?
Questions for Victoria about Little Tyke?
I appreciate the additional information that was provided to us about this and about the treaty that we're going to study, that was provided by the board for Chatham Park.
Any comments or questions? The board ready for a motion?
I have one question. Did you say the treaty's working today?
Well, I know that they're. Well, I know that it is.
There is a stand playground?
I did receive additional correspondence and recognizing that that would be not relevant to the proceeding. I would like to ask if, I think I think you would ask for additional public comment that might come forward at this moment? Because I thought that someone might come. Neighbors. Is that a great call?
That's correct. If that's going to be the case, then I need a motion to go back into public hearing with respect to this particular special use permit. I believe we didn't close it, but I think that we would need to authorize the continuance with Mr. Masek.
I thought you were on the right track. Yeah.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by John Bonnet, seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those who say that please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Is there anyone that cares to speak with respect to this special use permit? That did not speak at the prior meetings this board on this issue? Hearing none, then is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So, second?
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you. The motion carries. Were there any additional questions for Victoria or the applicant? Thank you. I don't have a question, but thank you for providing this so that we can see where you want to put your family. Playground, the tree, go back. Thank you. And I'd like to thank the board and the town planner with respect to the kindness that it's intended to you as someone who's trying to develop a small business. And the idea that we wanted to prevent you having to hire massive amounts of engineers and all of that kind of thing. I've been told as well that the licensing system will make sure that all of those aspects are relatively well taken care of. Very well done. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this special use permit, S T dash two zero one seven dash zero three, for Little Tyke learning activity. Thanks.
Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Pamela Baldrin. Those who say that please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion taken. Next matter is the proposed annexation of Chatham Park near Fire Tower Road and Thompson Street. Planner Jeff Jones is with us to.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of the annexation public hearing. We had that on, took on August fourteenth. And this is for you to decide whether to annex one hundred and eight point eight eight seven acres. This area also includes that Thompson Street subdivision that you just. I know the timing is a little off. We should have the annexation first and we'll get that situated in future endeavors. But you have had the public hearing, as I mentioned, on August fourteenth. But there was no speakers after that public hearing and it has met its efficiency as determined by the town board.
Are there questions for Jeff Jones or the owner applicant? Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is Old Business Number Three, proposed annexation of Everman Property at the Monchur Pittsboro Road.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing that was held on August twenty-eighth to consider the annexation request for twenty point three oh three acres. Its location is two seventy Pittsboro Monchur Road. It's historically known as the Old Townsend Chicken Plant. It is under review currently for an outfit to a concrete facility and storage facility. The property owner would like to have you all consider the annexation, even though the planning board tabled the item because there was no representation from the applicant or their engineers at the planning board meeting. So the planning board cannot ask questions pertaining to the site plan that was under review. So I have spoken to the property owner and his representatives. And he's okay moving forward with the annexation if you all are. If not, we can table it or continue this to another time.
What's the social board?
They're really not connected, unless you all think they are. They're not connected.
What's where?
Annexation and the site plan. Site plan is open and this is something else. And he's taking a chance that we will approve the site plan. And even if you don't, it's still annexed if you go forward.
That was discussed. I typically, if that was going to happen, I would give the applicant the opportunity to pull back. I was actually surprised. I said, no, just go ahead and move forward. It's okay. So take that for what it's worth and it's your decision to make.
Well, prior to this conversation exchange, I had concerns about this. I'd spoken with one member of the planning board and that person was surprised that the party didn't show. And it's communicated to me that there were questions on board. And I guess since we have the chairman of the planning board here, I wonder if he might be willing to answer the question. Does he have a sense, Mr. Riefer Land, do you have a sense of? Were any of those questions articulated or was it just a statement of, yeah, I wish you had been here because I had some questions?
That's most likely that there were. Everybody knows the place. And we were, of course, looking and saw all of the drawings. Noticed a whole slew of encroachments and such stuff as that, which have been going on for years. And we were looking out saying, you know, we've got some questions. Is there someone we could discuss this with here? And no one was there. And by that time, the whole room was almost empty. And Jones said, well, they were supposed to be here. I talked to them. They said they were coming or something like that. They were aware that we had this meeting tonight and they were expected to be here to have this discussion. So there were no specific questions brought up, but the whole board was anxious to make inquiry and do a decent study. And we weren't able to. Does that?
Thank you.
And do I understand that was with respect to the site plan?
Yes.
But this is a separate issue?
Yes.
The annexation.
And I believe we've already provided a allocation.
Sure.
For this property. A small allocation for the office.
Yeah. Will we approve the annexation?
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you. Question carries. I'm gathering our discussion of the water shortage management with our engineer, Fred Boyle, is not going to go forward.
No, it's not. I mean, it's the same document that we reviewed before. As I indicated in my memo, we made the changes. So if you have any other changes, great. If not, I don't think Fred's absence, unfortunate absence tonight doesn't necessarily.
I've got some questions. Are you? But in section five, triggers. They have these triggers. Caught my eye, the stage three says water usage exceeds one hundred percent. Now the figure of one point eight million gallons a day. And I've always understood the capacity was two million gallons a day. So just curious to get my figures correct. Is it one point eight or is it two?
I think it's permitted for two, but they backwash. And I don't think they can produce more than one point eight.
Okay.
Just my recollection.
Okay. And the other question I have has to do with water usage exceeding eighty percent in the town's water production capacity. And I'm wondering, how is production of eighty percent of the capacity? How does that constitute a shortage? It sounds like a lot of water. Is it an indication that at that production level, you're at risk of being unable to sustain that production level? Therefore, there is a potential shortage? And we should induce people to cut down on their usage?
You're talking about the stage one voluntary?
Yeah. I mean, it really applies for most eighty percent, ninety percent. You know, if we're producing the water, then I don't know if it's a shortage unless that amount of water doesn't provide enough water.
Yeah, I think there has to be a threshold somewhere. I don't know if it's the production, it's the production holding them up or.
Talking about temporary shortages. And if we are producing that kind of volume, where is the indication that it's indicative of a shortage? I know there's logic here, but I don't understand it. So it will be that open for consideration. And corollary to that. When we've got a shortage and we're in mandatory reductions. They can start the stage three mandatory reductions. The rate for using the water, how they multiply upon it. So now it costs one point five times the dollar to use a gallon of water. And I'm wondering if the rationale is we're increasing the cost.
As an incentive to reduce your usage, if it costs more, you should use less.
And you will, and we will penalize you for doing that.
Absolutely.
In addition to charging you extra.
Absolutely. No, that's the penalty, is the extra.
So if you meet the percentage reduction, then you don't get charged the extra? You get charged that extra for every gallon you go over the stated goal, reduction goal? Or do I get charged that for every gallon I use?
As written, it means all the word you use.
Yeah. So even if I meet the stated goal of twenty percent reduction, still going to get charged extra? I don't see how that's an incentive.
You're not in violation then. You're not in violation?
No.
Well, if you're not in violation, you're not going to get charged a surcharge.
Oh, so?
Surcharges for violators, not normal.
So if I don't use, if I reduce my usage by twenty percent, I get the regular rate?
Yes, I don't know how we're going to.
So for every gallon over that, I get charged extra?
No, not every gallon over that, all of your gallons if you're over.
Ah, okay.
So if you're a violator, you're using more than you're supposed to. And therefore you should pay the penalty.
And in addition to this five hundred dollar charge and this one thousand dollar charge?
Yes, absolutely. Board is supportive.
No, good.
So what we're asking you to do tonight is just kind of merely accept this plan. It's still in a comment period, as you can see. So at the next meeting, we'll note these comments. If you guys can think of anything else that you'd like to add or try, please let us know. And then we'll have another whack.
On the twenty-fifth?
Yes, sir.
I do have a question regarding the stage one, the five levels of water shortage response. Are they consistent with what the state considers a stage one as well? Because when there was a water shortage, people were very confused, as been a number of years ago. And they were saying, this is a stage one. That's what we want everyone to do. And nobody knew what stage one meant. So each city had a different idea of what stage one was. So I don't know if this is what the state considers a stage one. They should not be filed, you know, not triggered or anything. But is that consistent with?
Yeah, the draft ordinance was developed with state input. So.
Madam Mayor, do you have a?
Just a quick question. How does it account for amount of water loss in the system? Which I know we've been working on for years. So if we produce two million gallons theoretically, and if we lost thirty percent because of leaks and other things, and I know they're trying to drive that number down, how does that weigh into this? You understand what I'm saying, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that we could theoretically get ourselves into it because water's actually not giving us customer. But we're producing it, but they're not using it.
The policy addresses usage, not capacity. If the usage is over the limit, then it triggers these various things. So it's accounted on the town to determine what its usage of the customers are, not what it produces.
But it's based on eighty percent of the town's water?
That's because we're using a river for a water supply. If we had a lake that was finite in terms of volume, it would be easier to see when the mandatory stages came in. So we had to have some kind of trigger to start the whole process. So using the eighty percent of production is the easier way. It's the only way the town can do it because the river presumably is going to keep on flowing.
Would that change if we went to the Jordanite partnership?
I think that's a question.
That's a down the river question?
Let's kick that in. Manager's update? Unless there are other concerns about the water shortage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. New Town Hall, we have again been scouring the submitted proposals for heat assessment, space heat assessment and building design. I had anticipated to be able to speak tonight. One of the primary consultants that we're looking at is out of town this week. So I'm holding off until the twenty-fifth. But you can see here, as I kind of mentioned a little bit at the last meeting, some of the evaluation criteria that I'm applying towards the disposal of disinformation. This was outlined in the RFQ among a list of other information that was required to be submitted. So looking forward to representing a consultant to negotiate a contract in the next, in the next week. Other information, the electrical vehicles charging stations. I'm looking forward to having a potential consultant this week. Again, we received one proposal. I think just to get a feel, I think, for what this proposal is recommending and some of the concepts that they might have in mind. I think the starting point would be for me to interview the consultant, as outlined in RFQ. You can see here, one of the things in the, kind of interesting. You can see here, one of the things in the, kind of interesting, they had applied this actually to the Town Hall. You recall, we had four different locations, four different potential locations for electrical vehicle charging stations. One of the locations was Town Hall. This, of course, is a Town Hall. I think they confused the administration's Town Hall with Town Hall. But I kind of wanted to provide an outline with, kind of, a visual for what they would be proposing and how it would be going in and how the hardware and the infrastructure would be kept in this case. So anyway, it's really interesting. I like, you know, kind of tackling projects that I don't honestly have a lot of familiarity with, so this is going to be fun as we move forward. This isn't going to be a design that you're going to see moving forward unless the county moves ahead with an electrical vehicle charging station at this particular location. As you can see, they have an idea for it. Just want to come on that. Okay, we will need to circle back with you on the forest name guarantee. We have had Deb Port go back and recalculate some numbers with Wooton in terms of squaring away projections on the forest name guarantee we've got in part. We do need to get that in front of you, and we'll just come back to you on how we're going to be going about that. Our, Chatham County, I mentioned last week, has also had an RFQ out for the area of property that they have adjacent to the current administrative building, which includes, you know, the government annex, the old ag building, the Dunlop building. So we're finalizing a consultant selection on that this week. East Cornwall Street had some more discussions with DOT on that. And I need to outline a couple of options on that. Essentially, what I'm finding out from DOT, apparently the efforts to pave that stretch of East Cornwall Street Road, pre date meeting, go back a little bit, and if, apparently the town has taken a couple of stabs at it in the past, the DOT has gone at it and actually obtained, years ago, obtained some information from property owners. They found that a couple of the properties have some objects, some flagstones and things like that in there, which kind of caused a halt. Also too, that they would have, they would be requiring, or DOT would pave it, they would be requiring water and sewer be relocated from underneath the road. So I'm not saying it's impossible, but at least insofar as DOT paving it, it looks like there are some challenges there. They did say that they would relinquish control of the road to the town. They'd be willing to do that if the town would be willing to A, accept it, and B, pave the road. So we're going to have some more discussions, come back to you, I think, with kind of a clear outline of some of our options on that. So there's a worst case scenario that if you're willing to tackle it, we would have to, we would have to accept the road and work out a means of paving that road, which would probably be the least intrusive for the neighborhood property owners and at least for how utilities are currently situated on that stretch. So more fun, the fun continues. Auditors were here last week. They're out. They always finish a lot quicker than they say. I think they were supposed to be out by Thursday, and they were out by Wednesday, so that moved along well. As Fisher Baldwin, Pro Tem Baldwin indicated, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is requesting a representative, and they posted an ad for applicants that would be due by September 18th. And so if at all, if it's all possible, if you guys could decide tonight to maybe talk Campbell up into it, I think that would be the ideal situation. But that's purely between you guys. And I can certainly process that application information. The committee, of course, you recall the Affordable Rental Housing Committee had a report. We had anticipated reviewing that report with you this evening. I believe that, I didn't believe it was, I guess, necessary. Since John shared, given the amount of information we had on the agenda tonight, and maybe the amount of discussions we need to take place around it, so we're going to revert and look at having that presentation at the upcoming meeting. From their standpoint, the, I should say, from Title J's standpoint, and from the advisory committee's standpoint, the important thing, I think, is to appoint a representative or to have a representative. I've also included some reminders in there about the additional elements workshop dates on September 21st, October 5th, and again, until we hear otherwise, those are at Chatham Park, the Chatham Park offices. And those are Group 2 and Group 3 elements on two different dates. Also too, coming up on the horizon is our annual meeting with the Chatham Economic Development Corporation Opportunity Chatham, October 20th, and that will this year be at the County Ag Center on October 20th from 7:30 AM to 10:00 AM. You'll recall that in previous years, we, the town has reserved a table. And I'm willing to do that again unless the board feels it's not necessary. So unless I hear otherwise, we just can go ahead and reserve a table. And then I'll give you more details.
I've said something we've done in the past, so I think we should continue to do that.
And then upcoming meetings, of course, this is, this is going to change a little bit after tonight. We've got a couple of things on the agenda tonight. And so again, these things aren't actually stone, but just give you kind of a roadmap of where I think we might be hiding. So I thought I would tap out.
The same deck, last year was coming in October 9. That looks like that might be the case. Hold on.
I have a question. Bruce Deck, the county's request for quotes, what is that about?
I'm sorry?
I know what an RFQ is, but what's the doubt?
They have a, as I've indicated previous meetings, there is a master, they're taking qualifications from firms to help with, help to find a master plan for that property that I described adjacent to the current annex and the old ag building and the Dunlop building. So it's really kind of, I mean, they have some concepts that they've formally thrown at the walls, but they haven't had any real professional sussing out of how that's going to be in the future.
Did that impact us because...
It's in our downtown.
Okay. I didn't know that impacted the use of the potential Town Hall.
Not to my knowledge, no. Yeah, they, the board, the county board, as I indicated previously, the county board was adamant that the town be involved in this process, and so I kind of backed into it. I'm sure there'll be more opportunity for discussion on it as we move forward.
There is connectivity between our Town Hall and that one.
But as far as locating a Town Hall and the property?
No, I know, the rest here, the two boards.
Sure.
I'm kind of curious that, I'm wondering what the board's thought about some of the evaluation criteria for it and architects. I'd really like to see a local firm, something that practices, that weighs 20 percent, 20 points enough, if you can specify architects.
Commissioner Foley, I really appreciate you bringing that up because I'm a strong proponent of supporting local businesses and driving the local economy with our tax dollars. But in this case, I, I feel like this is going to be an outpost kind of on the future. It's a really big project, and the efficiency, cost of ownership of that structure very much concerns me. In fact, it concerns me more than keeping the dollars local. And if it's a firm that is from out of town, but happens to have greater expertise, more importantly, greater track record and history of energy efficiency, planning, design, architecture, I'd really like to see that articulated, the objectives, and so.
We do have a very qualified...
We do.
Well, I agree that weighting the local is important. And I think it's as high as any other criteria. I think it's probably too low.
I can assure Commissioner Bonnies as well that all of the firms that whatever gave to this point all express familiarity with LEED. And that was something that some, I had requested that information be put forward, LEED and sustainable design and, you know, things of that nature. I think that had completely expressed in the proposal that we've seen at this point. It's going to be important.
I appreciate that. And as we said during our last exchange two weeks ago, it's less important that it be LEED, more important to be the track record, the integral nature of early design decisions on the performance of the building long term.
I'd like to see that the structure is in keeping with the other architecture in this firm, that the spheres of the community...
And I was very excited, actually, Manager Bruce Deck, that I think that in one of your prior presentations, you had indicated some time and space for public input that would might lead us in the direction of that kind of sentiment Commissioner Foley has expressed. Thank you.
It has to be owned by, it's a public building. This is very important. It's not, you know, we're looking at this, or I'm looking at this in two ways. On one hand, we have an organization right now, a $4 million organization, at some point in time, will be a 16 million plus organization. And I can't attract and retain talent to that organization by building half hazard offices over in Chadmill. I'm going to flat out tell you that right now. So it's something that we have to have that's centered in the downtown, in the community, that we can help develop.
I agree. We get one shot at this.
I also thank you for the updates on the upcoming events. There have been several emails and several comments from folks this past week about the fact that none of us had shown up at the Chamber of Commerce event last week, and that none of us had shown up at the 9/11 ceremony on Saturday, neither of which did I know was happening. And Michael, I don't, I think you, anyway, it's important for us to receive from you, the staff, and from you, the public, events that you, that we need to be at.
Okay, I wasn't aware that you guys were waiting, pardon me, for that information.
Well, I don't, not ordinarily, but the October 20th thing that you've talked about is obviously...
We do that, yeah, that's something we do every year.
But it's regrettable that we did not know about the chamber event this past week. Usually, Timmy Poindexter keeps us all very well surprised of things that are happening, but...
I did get an email from the Frenchwork...
I didn't get any, I looked back, as Michael did.
And that's something that we can, I can work with Cindy on and make sure that we do that. I wasn't aware that we hadn't received that information.
I thought the 9/11 event would be on 11, but it wasn't. But there was discussion about that, that none of us were there. Well, Commissioner, concern. Jake, can I?
Oh, hey, good to be here. And I did know about the 9/11 when I was out of town. And I guess I should have passed the word on, I did look up there, I had to thank you for doing a lot of cleaning up in the area and all, that was my fault.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
I've been approached by several people who are very concerned about that there's a word that it's sheeps, gas station is going to be built right next to the mall, which has been breakfast. I informed them that I would thought out more about it. I just wondered, is that something that the staff has seen that we haven't heard about yet?
Nothing's been submitted to that property, but it could, won't be a sheeps.
And the sheeps is kind of, I don't know where that started.
Right, it won't be a sheeps.
Okay. We have to hear that, because that would impact the...
That would impact...
Then brush it for having a gas station, right?
Well, I didn't say it wouldn't be a gas station. I said it wouldn't be sheeps.
It wouldn't be the big red flashing.
If I worked it further.
No, no.
Michael? I'm curious, did we lose the lights in the trees?
We're trying to find out what happened. I had asked, I anticipated that very question from...
I drove by.
Yeah, I texted John on Friday about that. I didn't have an opportunity to talk to him.
I know the tree service was trimming the trees over the holiday weekend. They may not have gotten back up yet. Because I provided them some supplies to block off the parking so they could do it on the holiday. So it may just be the delay on them getting back to it.
Oh, they looked freshly approved. I'm just, it's exciting that we're going to have some really meaningful work sessions on the additional elements that we've been studying and working through and struggling with. And so I'm looking forward to all of us being able to sit down in the room and provide down our thinking, our thoughts, our interpretation, our processing of the information. So let us all be ready and make it a very fruitful day.
Excellent. While we're discussing that, I was thinking that this being a work session, it needed to be up. But what does the board feel about outside speakers or the country, people, other persons? Ron Bruce Deck is shaking his head. I believe that that's been our policy in the past, is when we have a work session, we work.
There's no difference, there's no difference from just doing the same thing at a public meeting and inviting, I mean...
So that's what we'll do.
There, people, it's a public meeting, people can attend it. The discussion should be kept among you and other stakeholders.
And did the staff that agreed to meeting not have any experience here, people from the city here, okay, for reference?
Case questions arise.
Given the length of our presentation tonight and the documents, I'm wondering if we've, is that, that...
We heard it 2015, we heard it again tonight.
Oh, she wants to attend, that's what, but I don't think she needs to count the speakers.
Okay, all right, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
She's there if we want to access, we will.
Yes.
Good. Helen?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
In that case, are there motions in charge?
Second?